Hello everybody, welcome to the 37th Town Hall meeting. It's February 28th, 23. And today we're joined by Roger Caboty, Cardano Class Flyer Fools, Hedolf Ian, Isaac Jovan-Mikasa, Sugar and Spice and Frye's Defi. Thanks all for joining. And we do have a lot of returning faces, but I keep forgetting to, at the beginning of this call, give a little bit of an overview on what the Ambassador Program even is and intends to do. And on a very high level, we basically try to facilitate community members in providing them a way of contributing, spreading the word on SingularityNet. And we have a whole bunch of different setups for that. Like users can help out translating blog posts. There's all kinds of marketing activities. There's a whole bunch of workgroups to join in. And also, we're very open to new ideas. If you feel like, well, you say you're in the Ambassador Program, but you know not doing X, Y or Z, but you are very free to suggest any tasks and we'll try to accommodate there. And yeah, in the broader sense, we're trying to spread the word on the SingularityNet ecosystem. So yeah, that's an initial introduction there. And I made a little, made some slides for a little structure on the call. I don't think this will take the full time slots, so there's definitely room for, yeah, for open topics. And yeah, that being said, let's dive in. Alright, yeah, then starting on the, with the workgroups. The first one on the list is the Process Guild. We always have a meeting right after this call. And site 19, UTC. And the Zoom link will be shared in the Process Guild channel on the server, on the side here. And let's see. Usually Tivo is here with a very strong memory on what we did last week. I do have to look a little bit in the channel for the recap, because it was a crazy busy weekend on the SingularityNet ecosystem side of things. And let's see. Ah yes, we prepared the, it was quite funny. I think we spent quite some time on preparing for a Town Hall breakout room. And then when the Deep Funding Town Hall happened, we were not in the list of breakout rooms, which turned out fine. Most of the interested people were completely happy joining another breakout room. And that was a really, at least the one I joined was a really good session. And I haven't seen the other ones yet. I will do a quick check to, after this call, to see if they are, if the recordings of those are online, or maybe somebody in here knows?
I think only one of the breakout rooms was recorded. I can send the link, one sec.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we did a whole bunch of reorganizing of the MyRab board. Like, a lot of tasks were scattered and that got organized quite a bit more. And I'm pretty sure I'm forgetting on about half of the time we spent that Process Guild meeting. Luckily, the Ambassador YouTube channel has a recap by Tivo of that meeting. So that gives a two to three minute overview of what we did that session. Then next on the list would be the Treasury Guild. Let me quickly check the room if we have anybody in from the Treasury Guild. I do not think so. No. But I can put some generic comments on the Treasury side of things. I saw some members popping up, like asking what happened with this task, what happened with that one, what's up with the reward distribution? And when will the sheet get updated with all the, with a full overview of all the tasks and rewards for those tasks? And basically, since we switched from me being the Treasury to implementing the Swarm Treasury system, that sheet will not be updated one-on-one. Tivo did provide in the Treasury Guild channel a link to the latest distribution, which did all the, all the information, all the tasks which were included. And this week, we'll have a session where we'll actually make sure, like do a final check, like is nothing getting missed? Are all the processes for reporting and auditing? And making sure that the Treasury Guild can actually, has a one-on-one percent correct overview, like this is done, this needs to be paid? Yeah, these types of processes. Yeah, we'll arrange that during the session on the Thursday 16 UTC. So if you're currently missing some payouts on a task, that is the reason for it and it should be fixed by this Thursday. Just making sure, any questions on that? Alright. And then next on the list would be the Marketing Guild. Let's see, last Monday Flyer Fools, I think. That's why I'm not sure, I was not able to attend.
On the Marketing Guild meeting?
Yes, the one yesterday. Well, not the Friday one.
Yeah.
You can give a little overview on what?
Yeah, nice. So I, I wasn't in the last Friday meeting, but we had a workshop yesterday. So I can run you guys a bit through what we were talking about. It was attended by Apex, Cardano Class, Creed, Kenichi, LittleButs, Mikasa, Hedolf, Flyer Fools. We talked about the Twitter workshop, mentioned that. Kenichi and the Tweet Deck. We talked about the Writers Workgroup thread, which has been created in Discord for those that apply to the DWork tasks. And the group should find a date and time to meet. I've suggested letusmeet.com, which is in the thread chat. Kenichi mentioned creating tasks for partnership building and writing content creation. The community agreed that writers can make the articles up to 1,000 words without commissioning. Rewards may also be given for very high quality of work decided by the community. We also discussed how to minimize micromanagement of tasks to save on admin time. And with Kenichi also spoke about the work done in the Marketing Guild guide. And with Kamara, two hours have been taken so far. They'll give an estimate of the hours for the whole task once they have an idea of it and put that in a DWork task. Kenichi mentioned MyRab board and creating for graphics. And I shared a document to help the planning using a document which me and Cardano created a while ago, laying out some suggestions, guidelines for payments, payouts for articles and other parts of Marketing Guild. We looked at Kamara's task to represent ambassadors at ETH Denver, which is at this week, we wish it were all the best. We agree that the reward was fair, 200 agics. And that this is perhaps a scalable task. We agree that from now on, other ambassadors can use this as a stencil for attending future events as an ambassador for SingularityNet. And I've now made a DWork task for anyone to kind of apply. So we agreed that people don't have to apply to represent SingularityNet ambassadors at events, but can submit work afterwards, giving reasons and justification. If the community disagree, then discussion can take place in the Marketing Guild meetings. And then there's a link. I shared a bit the collaboration between me and Cardano has been really successful recently. And Marketing Guild has been a bit less productive in the short term. This is partly because this collaboration between Cardano and I hasn't been possible recently. And currently, I don't feel confident enough to decide all the details for the tasks without more input from the community. I asked if anyone was interested in working a bit closer to, closer in Marketing Guild to help with this management? And Mikasa was interested, so we're going to follow up on that this week. If anyone else is kind of interested to help work out these, yeah, these things, please, more than welcome. I've linked in the Marketing Guild and I'll just link it here for anyone who hasn't done a task on DWork yet, that we have something called My First Bounty, which will take you through the process and explain a bit about how you kind of get involved in tasks on the SingularityNet DWork. So I'm just going to post this in the event chat. That's all I have from Marketing Guild so far.
Yeah, cool stuff. Thanks a lot for that.
Pleasure.
Let's see, yeah, well, earlier today, we had this Twitter workshop, which I was strongly intending for Cardano to also be part of that as well. He is up until this point, pretty much running it, the Twitter account by himself. However, that didn't quite work out. And we had a session, it was, it ended up in the Marketing Guild. There's now a Twitter management thread with a sheet in there. And that Google sheet has like different tabs for like topic ideation, drafts of tweets, a list of ecosystem accounts for potential root tweets. Caio Fabian, thank you both for joining in, but you have a lot of background noise.
Hey guys.
Oh, please mute yourself.
Now, really?
Well, there's a lot of background noise.
Please continue.
Um, okay. Please, Caio, yes, awesome, we got it. Thank you. So yeah, for anybody interested in helping out with the Twitter management, in the, so in the Marketing Guild channel, there's a Twitter management thread. And for all your ideation and discussion on whether tweets are fine to send out or not. And also for asking access to the Tweet Deck. Yeah, basically, all things Twitter related, that's the place to be. And then, let's see. Quickly checking in on the slides, covering, making sure we cover all the topics. Well, for those who are not yet aware, there's a public calendar you can add to your, to your calendar, so you never miss out on all of the, on any of the public meetings of both the Ambassador Program and also Deep Funding.
funding Town Hall last week. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that was a great event.
Absolutely.
So we have the main room recorded and one of the breakout rooms now. So maybe, maybe you guys have some ideas about what we should start doing with the deep funding videos that we're starting to collect now from these. And yeah, yeah, great, it was a great event to be part of. And we're not having one this week, but there'll be one next Thursday. Yay, and I'll post a link actually in the chat.
Is there any news about, do we know when we're gonna do a meeting for the, for the Marketing Videos team?
Good question. Initially, the slot was on the Monday 19 UTC slot. And I didn't attend yesterday, so I'm not sure. It sounds like that was not the topic yesterday.
Yeah, that didn't happen.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we stream, or basically, I don't have time to host so many meetings every day. So I, me and Cardano kind of pushed these smaller meetings into the Marketing Workshop, which we hope is, this was basically on the basis that there's not enough engagement in the Marketing Guild workshops to justify having these kind of breakout meetings, which cause more micromanagement. So our idea was basically to kind of try and funnel the people trying to do breakout rooms, these like more break-off topics, kind of get them through marketing workshops. But this is, this is partly on the basis of that I don't have time to lead it. So like last week, a couple of weeks ago, I've been, I changed the tasks to kind of try and enable more self-organization from the community. So this is something that, yeah. Yeah, I can post the links and I can make a thread on, another separate thread on the Discord. And we can try and start the conversation there, if you would like.
Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
How's it going? Go for it.
On the subject of making things more simple in the Ambassador Program, I'd like to speak to the possibility of using a tool that I found here at DAO Denver called DAO Lens. And I know that, pardon, can you hear me okay?
Oh, good, yeah.
Okay. So DAO Lens is a tool for communities and for DAOs, where each member has a vote, obviously. And you, it's a, it's a one-place tool where you can put proposals and voting and communication and tasking. And it will connect with our native token. So AGIX on ETH or AGIX on Cardano, whichever one we want, they'll work it in. And it seems like a real, you know, a really good potential solution for us to use this tool to make it so that tasking actually gets done and rewarded automatically, you know, that the proposal that is made by the person who's proposing the task has a smart contract attached to it, so that when the outcome is delivered and it meets the criteria of the proposal, then the task is automatically rewarded, or it could, you know, have a reviewer that has to look at it, you know, you can set those different things. So at this time, I'd like to propose that we look at that tool and potentially start integrating it as soon as possible to take away the problem of proposal, you know, having to propose things in Town Hall meetings, which some people can't make it to because we're all in different parts of the world. For instance, myself, I can't always make it to the meetings that happen at like 4:00 or 5:00 AM my time. And then we wouldn't have this issue of, you know, when is, when is a task going to be paid out? Or when am I going to get rewarded? Because it would happen automatically on the smart contract.
Sounds interesting.
Questions or comments?
I do have a small initial comment, is that we pretty much signed up for the Swarm Treasury Guild for the coming two months for testing their service. That seems, that wouldn't quite be needed, perhaps, if we, if we would use this tool for DWork.
Does the Swarm Treasury tool include all of those different aspects? Or is it more just for tasking treasury stuff?
No, it's mostly on the Treasury side, absolutely. It's, I haven't taken a proper look at the tool, but it sounds like it's more complete than DWork, the way you describe it at least. Perhaps you could?
Yeah, when I saw it, I was really quite amazed. And then I spent some time talking with the founder, his name's Bikram. And he says, you know, right now, they're really working on building out unique use case scenarios. And that if their tool won't do what we want it to, they will build it out how we want it for free. And he's very, very bright, so it's a really interesting opportunity.
And so you were saying DAO land, right?
It's called DAO Lens, L-E-N-S.
Check, got it. Yeah, no, that's.
And then I'm, I'm sorry to take up, I hope I'm not taking up too much talking space. But I'm here at DAO Denver, ETH Denver, as the SingularityNet ambassador. And I've been watching the DSI presentations all morning. And I've been thinking about, you know, how it connects to SingularityNet and our different ecosystem. And so there's so many pieces that connect. For instance, there's people developing tools that are very similar to Nuneet. There's people developing different kind of health tools that are very similar to Rejuve. And then there's people doing database stuff. And is our database stuff kind of like Nuneet? Or is there another piece of it that we do this database?
I'm not sure if I even understand the question correctly. Our database stuff is pretty basic, like we use some sheets, but that's all.
Okay. Well, then it's, I'll have to reformulate if I have a question. But basically, there's like, there's one fellow here, his name is Giuliani. And he's kind of the overall leader for the DSI presentations that are happening here. And I think that it would be really interesting to put him in touch with somebody at SingularityNet to see where we have potential synergies and partnership with the DSI community. Because we're talking about large groups of researchers, doctors, you know, universities, funding. We're talking about like very serious money, very serious projects, very smart, dedicated people. So Peter, if you know, like, so as with the Ambassador Program, like I believe that our entire goal is to spread the word about SingularityNet and help bring other, you know, companies, communities, projects into the fold, so that we can, you know, just distribute information coming in and information going out through, so that our AGI is, you know, the most empowered decentralized AGI on the planet. And so they can have the most benefit for humanity as a whole. So I think that it would be really cool for SingularityNet to partner with some of these other organizations. So what is the process for an ambassador to help connect different organizations in partnership with SingularityNet, is my question?
Fair enough. Welcome, big heads, and enjoy your chips. Could you please mute yourself for a little bit? Well, this process is not formalized. We do have a partnerships manager, I can give you his contact details, but that would be like a way of connecting, pretty much. And also, when you were mentioning the databases, I was answering that in perspective of the Ambassador Program. But I, when you were talking, I understood more and more that this was on the broader ecosystem level. So, well, Nuneet itself, yeah, that's, that's in the best case scenario. Nuneet will be the way for, what to have all the knowledge distributed, basically. So the, yeah, that's, that's the, they also have a lot of DSI interest. So yeah, the way it sounds to me is like, perhaps I should shoot you some contact details for Nuneet specifically, which you could then pass on to them.
Yeah, that could work. And then if you have your partnership manager, that I should probably be in touch with them.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just stand a little bit, DAO Lens, but that looks pretty interesting, absolutely.
Yeah, DAO Lens is super, super awesome. I think it would be great to have a place where we can put proposals other than on, you know, because right now, it seems like there's, there's, for me, it feels like there's a little bit too much confusion about like where to ask certain things or where to propose, where to get permissions, where to, you know, when you, for instance, I got the ability to create tasks in DWork, but I didn't know like how are we allocating resources? Or like what are, and what are the requirements for posting a task? Are you allowed to create a task in which you are receiving the funds for yourself? Like all of these things, I think we need to flesh out a little bit. And I think that having a tool like DAO Lens, where, you know, everything has a community vote that can be done over a period of a couple of days or even a few hours, will make it a lot simpler than, than having to have Town Hall meetings regarding specific topics, although I think some things still need to be talked through. Alright, so if anybody has any questions for me, I'm available, but I'm gonna stop talking now so I don't take up your whole call. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you're the actual very first live-on-the-spot ambassador out there. So kudos for that, it's great stuff. Let's see, a couple of tiny topics I still want to touch on. And then I want to move on to a guest who has joined. So yeah, I'll quickly try to wrap up the start section.
Just a note on this, this is a very good question and I have some things. So I'll just write them down and put them in the chat afterwards, cool.
I should wish. I mean, if it's connected to what we're talking about right now, feel free to ask.
Yeah, yeah, but we can come back to it, it's okay. Go ahead.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, little update on the task side of things. For the Ecosystem explainer blog post and the Rejuve announcement blog post, these will be on DWork, both of them later today. They're not yet, right now. But I will make time right after this to put them on there. So you will see them pop up in the Discord announcements, like the DWork task channel. And then on the Marketing Guild board, well, this was touched on a little bit already. Seems we still have a little bit to go on the, well, with Mikasa stepping up, offering help. And I believe Roger Caboty, Roger Caboty also indicated he was interested in helping out there. Yeah, I think we can get these tasks a bit more defined, which are currently on there. And also, Magic Defi asked about any update on community moderating. Yeah, that role definition for Discord moderation, but also Telegram and broader social media moderation, that still needs to happen, because last week, I planned a session and there were no joiners. So I found myself sitting there and then I had to do somewhat urgent stuff. So after 20 minutes, it was like, okay, I'm gonna have to retry at a different moment. And yeah, we should plan out a schedule as Magic Defi notes in chat. And, yeah, well, the connection of both the Rejuve blog and also potential Rejuve task coming, actually bring me to Jasmine, who has joined. And, well, she's in the spotlight for this week and the coming weeks. She's the CEO of Rejuve, which yesterday, we pushed out the Token Launch Announcement blog, finally, I can add, but it's live now, it's out there, we cannot go back. Yeah, perhaps Jasmine, you could? yeah, perhaps Jasmine, uh, you could tell us a little bit about Rejuve or yourself, whichever you prefer first.
Uh, yeah, so um, well, I assume like everyone here would probably be following the ecosystem somewhat closely. But um, yeah, Rejuve is our uh, health and longevity uh, spinoff. So it's a decentralized longevity research network. We have uh, our app currently in beta right now on both iOS and Android platforms. And it's basically an app where you can enter in various types of health data uh, and earn uh, rewards for contributing that data to our research database. Um, so some of the ways to contribute are entering surveys and health profiles, uploading lab uh, results, which is a little bit uh, simple form right now, but will eventually become more advanced. And the one that's people's favorites is wearables connections. So um, being able to sync your Apple Watch, Fitbits, Garmin, uh, or a ring and other uh, devices as well as we integrate Google Fit to be able to uh, put data on there as well. And yeah, as Peter announced, we uh, finally announced our token uh, generation event, which is starting on the 13th on the Singularity Dow Launchpad. And going through to the 16th is when the, the token is like emerged and so to speak. Um, yeah, so uh, anything, oh yeah, so did you want me to talk about maybe potential ambassador task or?
Yeah, sure. Yep.
Uh, yeah, so along with um, the regular translation stuff, we have some kind of unique tasks for Rejuve. I would be interested in presenting, one of them being reviewing the lab ranges uh, that we have in the app. So we have over a hundred different biomarkers, um, like C reactive protein and, you know, different mineral levels and uh, in, in the blood. So we would like someone with kind of clinical experience to be able to review the ranges and be able to, so that we can present them the best ways, so that the lows are the correct place and the highs are. Uh, we wanted to be able to accommodate um, strange scenarios, for instance. Like there can be times where people really can have a super high level of something, but then still be walking around. Like there's been a case proven of it, but then there's other times where, you know, you wouldn't be able to be sitting there using an app. Let's say if you typed in this number, so it's just more aesthetically pleasing if we don't uh, include these wildly wide, uh, wide ranges in there. And uh, we also will have the normal translation task. And actually, a lot of people are interested in the app being in other languages. It's kind of a common request that we get um, in the community channels is, is the app available in this language, is that available in that language? And right now we just have um, in English because we've just been focusing really hard on um, building it and launching it. But we want to be able to have it in multiple languages so that people all over the world will be able to understand it better and find it easier to use and share with all their friends and family as well.
That good stuff. And these tasks will pop up in D Work shortly. Um, perhaps any questions from uh, anybody in the room?
Can you guys, if you could speak a little bit to how Rejuve syncs in to the different parts of the ecosystem? Like are you using NuNet for the storage of your data? Or what are some of the other pieces that you integrate into the Rejuve products?
Uh, yes, we definitely want to have that uh, ecosystem inter-operation going. Um, so at the moment, we're not uh, currently connected yet, just because uh, NuNet is just about to go into public output. But eventually, yeah, we do want to run the AI services there as well. And our first uh, AI service that we have in the app right now called, based on uh, the Singularity Net marketplace in the backend. So we want to be able to have the front end of that ready too, so that other scientists and researchers can also use that system. And that's one where you can put statistics uh, from analysis uh, scientific papers and create models, like topic-specific models. Ours is longevity, but you can technically uh, make any kind of um, AI model that involves collecting a large volume of statistics. So uh, that's one way. And we also want to put in um, a longevity newsfeed in there too for Mindplex.
Would you guys, would you guys be interested in accessing the D side decentralized, you know, science, health research database that I just learned about this morning? They're here today.
Uh, yes, I would like to know more.
Okay, I'll send you a DM and then I'll connect you.
Oh, thank you. Hey, uh, how are you?
Okay.
Hello.
Uh, is it me or is, maybe some wrong buttons were clicked there?
Uh, yeah, but I thought someone started to speak, but it, and I didn't know if it was.
Okay, uh, I, I hope he finds his way back. Well, if anybody else has uh, questions, now would be a great time. Or remarks or.
No questions, but sounds really cool. Nice.
Thanks.
Another task that we were thinking, but it's um, a bit more involved is to, you know, help expand that base net that I was talking about. Cause it is kind of a lot of work to find all of the different articles to load into there. And it has kind of a specific criteria that would be better if someone was more familiar with reading those types of papers. But it's not that someone that isn't, couldn't learn it as well. Um, so that could be something that we also put up there in the near future.
That could be really cool. It kind of reminds me of a conversation with Felix from Swarm a while ago. Uh, he was talking about how surgeons learn. Um, and there's either one surgeon who's very experienced, who's taking someone else through it. Or there's another surgeon who's just doing, say, an operation for the first time. And another person who's uh, new to it, who's just watching or taking notes. And I imagine that using that kind of onboarding process with uh, getting people involved, especially with that kind of, uh, the level with depth for research papers and things. Uh, it could be a really cool opportunity for um, ambassadors to get involved and kind of level up their skills in that sense if they want to go there. Cool.
Yeah, definitely like, yeah, on the citizen science uh, type of theme, you know, getting more involved in this decentralized research network. That is really good.
So I, I guess we, we do, on some of these tasks, we would have to specify like a, a little bit of like preferred, um, yeah, level of skill, I guess, because it sounded to me at least, uh, one of these, um, I would completely not be able to deal with personally. Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll simply indicate, make it as clear as possible what kind of prerequisites, if any, there would be. That should be doable.
That's a great idea.
Um, the other way around, um, Jasmine, would you, would you maybe have questions for us?
Um, well, yeah, I guess I'm not here that often, so I'm kind of just uh, sitting in and seeing how, uh, what's all happening here.
Of course, absolutely fine.
I guess, has anyone, um, I guess any, any, uh, well, I guess if you are, if you were beta testing the app, you probably have, and in the beta tester channel or commented in some way. But if you haven't, um, you can check that out, it's still running.
And what's the easiest way for people to, because there, there's, there's not so much overlap between uh, Telegram and Discord. And I, I think some of the people here I know are also on, on Telegram, but I think the majority isn't. Um, is it like something on the website, uh, where people can sign up for it?
Um, yeah, and I can, I don't know, wait, is there like a public uh, chat thing in here on there?
Yeah, on the top right, it should say something on the, you can chat.
Yeah, so there's a, on a subscribe page and it sends you a little get started and the links on iOS and Android and also a link to a beta testers Telegram group. Included in the email, so I'll share that.
Perfect. Um, Tivo asking if we can share meeting notes. I don't think there's currently a lot of note taking ongoing, unless somebody is in the secretly.
The note taking.
Uh, that's, yeah, it, yeah, Tivo, usually you are the one taking the notes. Turns out if you don't join, oh, the meeting slides, sure, that, that, that I can do. That's, that's uh, I have those. Hmm, sure, uh, let's copy link. No, but it's interesting. If, if you're not there at the beginning of the meeting, turns out, um, I mean, it's recorded, so it's not lost. Um, yeah, interesting. Alright, uh, looking at the clock, we've got about eight or nine more minutes uh, for this session. Um, anybody have uh, any questions for Jasmine still? Just checking in before um, potentially moving on. Well, I, I, I do want to show myself actually, that it's uh, just pretty amazing to see Jasmine in this position. Because when I got involved in the Singularity Net ecosystem, um, just on a community member on Telegram and at some point started um, moderating a little bit. And then, well, Jasmine was one of the core admins of the, of the ecosystem. And I think we both started working at Singularity Net not that far apart, like maybe one or two weeks. And yeah, to see where you've come from and where you are now, that's, that's just, just, you're launching, it's amazing. It's just, yeah, very proud of that. That's super cool.
That's really cool. That's really cool.
Yeah, let's see, the, just quickly checking if there's anything remaining on my slides. Um, because, yeah, I think for now, let's, let's um, a little bit close to Rejuve topic, it will be top of mind for the coming weeks uh, for, for most of us. Um, but um, yeah, thanks a lot for sharing Jasmine. And yeah, I hope you also do get a little enjoyment in the coming. Let's see, then uh, yeah, let's wrap up the slides portion. Um, ah, well. So, yeah, well, that, that got touched on. Um, then on uh, deep funding round two, uh, the vote and uh, um, also the vote on the loyalty reward. Um, as I'm sure most of you have, I'm not sure actually, as some of you may have noticed, uh, this got postponed uh, because of the wallet linking not being available. And we, yeah, simply do want to uh, support voting on Cardano. Um, so yeah, that's, that's basically, um, for now, that's, that's postponed. And we had postponed this earlier by one week. And then some issue popped up, which made it not realistic to actually have it finished in one week. So for now, we didn't commit to a new date and it's, yeah, it's a bit, it's not so concrete, but basically it will be done when it is done. And that's, yeah, the dev team is working on it super hard. So I'm, I'm pretty confident it will be uh, resolved shortly. Um, but yeah, the, the alternative would be going live with a voting tool that's not working properly. And that's just not uh, something we want to do. So yeah, basically that communications on that will follow once it's uh, resolved. And I think, yeah, the moment we know it's resolved, the voting will go live within a week. So do stay tuned, uh, stay tuned for that. And then, yeah, as was touched on before this week, there's no town hall on deep funding. Uh, next week at uh, Thursday 19 UTC, there will be a town hall. And as you may have noticed, um, there's room for, for organizing breakout rooms on pretty much any topic related to deep funding. And so yeah, if you're interested in, in hosting one, you can already start planning ahead a little bit. There, there will be signup forms uh, shared on the deep funding channels soon enough. And this Thursday at 19 UTC, there's actually um, a viewing party for the second episode of the Mindplex podcast. And this is taking place on the Singularity Net YouTube channel. Uh, it was quite fun uh, two weeks ago. So yeah, um, just wanted to, to give that a little shout out at 19 UTC, Thursday. And I do believe that covers my side of things. Yes, it does.
I'm checking these slides and probably it was mentioned, but I'm just saying it over that this week Treasury Guild will going over uh, the process, how to take in the Singularity Net contributions, how do we audit them, how do we bundle them into one transaction? And through the rewarding and basically have all this process in visualizing and then collecting feedback, how could we improve, what kind of directions do we run onto, what kind of features we want to add? And I also checked that uh, it's in the slide, it's written 16 UTC. But last Treasury Guild, we agreed to move all Treasury Guild meetings 30 minutes back. So it's actually start time is 15:30 UTC.
Yeah, thanks a lot. I, I did change it just now, but you're, you're, yes. Um, that does make me want to double check if it's also in the public meeting uh, or in the, in the public calendar, if it's also reflected correctly.
Working on.
Okay, amazing. Um, let's see, um, Fly, if it was earlier, you mentioned uh, something to potentially uh, push back a little and touch on later. Now could be a decent moment for that.
Uh, ah, yeah, uh, it was on the, on the tail end of what Kamara was saying, uh, about being uh, ambassador at events. Uh, what was I gonna say? Um, ah, yeah, well, I had an idea. Well, I was at this uh, symposium on uh, self-organization a few weeks ago, um, leading a workshop. And there was a load of AI uh, academics, specialists on, yeah, AI cybernetics and a really few cool topics, which I thought could be really beneficial for ambassador uh, community. Um, I thought, I thought that there could be a kind of uh, events set up, which are more um, kind of inviting experts in and uh, yeah, I think, I think it's very relevant now, especially in terms of how we, how we organize ambassador program. And I, I consider, for instance, this Twitter, uh, this Twitter workshop today, I wasn't in there much. But there wasn't, that, it was like an hourish long, but there wasn't any contributions in the sheet for um, for tweets. And I just consider uh, that we, we can really level up um, in ambassador program. And I don't see it as a problem with uh, the organization or the people. Like I think we have some amazing, we have an amazing group of uh, people who are kind of have a, a lot of energy when we can, when we engage them in the right way. Um, with lots of skills that ambassador program could really use. So I kind of just wonder uh, So I kind of just wonder, uh, yeah, how, how we, how can we level up, guys? Um, I can, yeah, it kind of made me think about it today, uh, in the Twitter workshop. Um, it's just kind of, it's perhaps something I've been feeling for a while, um, that, uh, that like the structures of engagement aren't fully working with, uh, the people here. So I just wonder how we can, yeah, how we can level up our game and kind of like, uh, engage in a more, um, in a better way.
Yeah, fair remarks. Um... Yeah, I mean, it's, if I had the answer to this question, um, didn't need for it, the question would be lower. Um...
Well, I mean, that may perhaps where these, uh, experts coming in and us inviting these experts in self-organization and, uh, AI cybernetics and these, uh, structural functional organizations essentially. Perhaps we could kind of like, um, perhaps we have the right questions now that we're kind of tackling in, in concrete terms, rather than some kind of like hypothetical reasoning, which actually, we're dealing with right, we're dealing with the problems of the, of decentralization, uh, and self-organization right now in the ambassador program. And I feel it's kind of like a bit of a fractal, like a microcosm. If we can kind of work out how we do on this very grassroots level, then I think we're kind of stumbling on a really scalable, uh, mechanism that we can like, um, really, really throw out into the world. Uh, so even though like, I feel like some of the things, some of the thoughts have a kind of like petty, uh, in, in sometimes, I think, but in others, uh, I don't know, I think it's very, I think it's very important for us to, um, stress-test the ambassador program as a scalable, um, decentralized community. Even if, even if we, for instance, don't need, uh, the tokens to, uh, live and get bread. I think, um, uh, it, if we don't engage with it in this kind of very sincere way, um, then I think we're kind of like using it as a little toy, but actually, we're trying to, it's like the, we're, it's big questions, you know, and like, I feel some, some things are not easy to answer. It's kind of why there's not the answers in this, so I see how, I see there's so much knowledge here and how we can kind of level up. Yeah, my side for it.
So I don't know if everyone can hear me. This is my first time participating, um, oh, great, um, online at all. I've been kind of, I just got, um, I come from the Cardano side. Uh, my interest is building smart contracts, uh, getting ready for Plutus integration with smart contracts. And, um, I just got re-involved in Twitter, um, and I, I like to follow Charles and Elon Musk and Singularity Net mostly and chat with, uh, Sophia. And, um, so I, I'm just starting to participate, and I don't know how I can help, um, but, um, I'm, I'm definitely in, do this ecosystem for life, I think, so I'd like to get involved in all of it, uh, especially on the contract writing side. Anyway, uh, thank you, Pauline Gates again.
Awesome. Uh, well, great to have you. Um, practically speaking, uh, right now, we don't have, um, too many smart contracts being developed by our ambassador program yet. Um, that, that might change, who knows? Um...
Oh, I was just kind of helping on the Twitter, you know, Twitter end as in the, you know, just sharing in any way I can.
Awesome.
I'm, I'm interested in all aspects of Singularity Net.
And also, deep funding is perhaps a great place. Uh, there's lots of teams who are kind of, who have been making teams recently, or in ideation, applying for ideation, that kind of will be looking for smart contractors. So I think definitely there's that opportunity to kind of, uh, uh, make connections and, um, and teams, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I was, um, specifically interested in deep funding as well because of the work that I'm planning on putting in.
Awesome. Yeah, that's, that's, that's great, right?
I'm open.
Hmm, cool. Um, I imagine you've, uh, noticed the deep funding section on this Discord server as well then. There is one.
I did. I, I'm just getting into it. I noticed this town hall meeting, so I thought I'd better just join all town halls until I get things figured out. But, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Don't hesitate to ask any questions if, uh, if you have to. That's, uh, that's the way to go. Um, looking at the clock, we're running over a little bit. Uh, I guess it's time for a quick check to see if there's, uh, more contributions to this session. Anybody have any requests?
Peter, uh, Fly, I have a suggestion, uh, if, if you don't mind questioning suggestions, so to speak. If you can hear me well as I'm driving, um, Fly, you brought up a, uh, or, or created a concept in my mind about boosting up, uh, the program is, is there an onboarding document or process for bringing in new ambassadors and new people to the cadre to get them onboarded enough to speak, uh, up to level, to, to be able to speak? That would be my question. And my suggestion would be that perhaps we have a breakout room at the next meeting or maybe the next skill meeting on how to develop a, an onboarding process to maybe, uh, I don't know, help, help the ambassador cadre build.
And guys, it's a great question. Um, let me just get my notes up here, so I've got the information. Uh, there, Kanichi and Kamara are currently working on a marketing guild guide, um, which they're partway through. Um, I will, I will link it to you in the chat when I find it. Um, so there is that, but I definitely see that opportunity. Currently, we have over 300 people which have signed up via email. Um, s, uh... You, you are kind of, yeah, they, they've applied with some interest to Singularity Net ambassador program. Um, so they're waiting to kind of be engaged. Um, one of the, one of the things I do consider is that, um, uh, I'm not sure the structure of, um, initiating or producing tasks is mature enough to handle, uh, like, large influx of people, um, wanting to get deeply involved. We can do a lot more work, um, on kind of, uh, making that production of tasks, uh, better for the community. Um, that's one consideration I have, but I definitely see the opportunity, uh, that you mentioned. Um, and maybe Pete has some more info.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I do. Um, in, in a way, it's, uh, it's also connected to, um, it's, it's pretty loosely defined currently, what it constitutes to be an ambassador. Like, um, we started out with, um, primarily with, uh, translation tasks. And, but this really helps, uh, spread the word, literally. Um, it could be argued that it's maybe not the most, um, ambassador-y task around, like, um, if you translated, uh, yeah, if you translate a blog post, uh, that's quite something, uh, different from Kamara being on the floor in, in Daudenver. Like, being out there and talking to people, that's, that's a whole other level of, of ambassador-ness. And right now, there's not, um, there's, there's, yeah, there's the Getting Started, uh, thread, which basically points at a, a couple of basic resources on the ambassador program. And from that point on, basically, it, it's pretty open. You can go on DWork and find something to do which interests you, and there's not much holding you back. Like, we don't have a, oh, you need to be ambassador level three before you can translate into Chinese or something, like, um, or before you can make an infographic on, uh, topic X. Um, that's, that's, yeah, in a way, it's, it's almost too open, I guess. It's, it's, uh, it's always a bit of a balance between providing structure and, and allowing freedoms. I, I feel that's, that's a constant. I also noticed that earlier today with the Twitter workshop. Um, it went a little bit different as planned because this, uh, because of Cardano not being there. Um, I did not prepare like a workshop workshop, um, but at the same time, yeah, at some point, it's like, well, we can use the sheet and you can ideate, and that's basically all there is to it. Like, yeah, there's, yeah. Um, and then it, yeah.
And like Marketing Guild, it's been, we've had both open tasks where, in, in a couple of form, where people can either suggest their own task or kind of, uh, giving more guidance about, uh, how to make a suggestion. Um, and we've also had the kind of more specific tasks, and these very specific tasks have worked much better than these kind of open suggestion tasks. Um, so I, I agree, uh, that it's very open, and it's something that I personally struggled with when I came into the ecosystem about like, okay, I, where is the boundary? Is it actually there? I, uh, finding how, how to contribute is definitely, um, something that takes a bit of time, uh, or took me a bit of time here. Uh, and also is a kind of discovery, I guess, to discover what skills we have and how we can kind of combine, uh...
So, um, how do you, what's this DWork then in the Twitter, um, the Twitter workshop? That I missed, that would have been a good one. Um, any pointers on how to get started?
Yeah, basically in the D Work, the event, uh, chat?
Events chat?
Yeah, on the top right, there should be like the speech bubble thingy.
Oh, yeah, ambassador events chat, uh-huh.
Yeah, that one. Uh, if you scroll like five messages back, there's, um, uh, I posted a little, uh, link to the Getting Started, um...
Okay.
Thread, that aims to, yeah, provide like basic info, including, uh, link to DWork. DWork is basically a Web3 Kanban board, um, yeah, for task management.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you. I will, uh, I will read through that.
Awesome. Um, and it's a bit tricky. I feel this topic of, of like, um, yeah, how to level up the ambassador, I mean, this is, is a topic we could talk about for hours. Um, at the same time, my, the clock kind of indicates, um, maybe we shouldn't write now. It's a bit tricky. Um...
It's a great conversation, and perhaps there could be like, uh, a, yeah, a kind of focus workshop on it, or, or we set off some more time, because, yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah, would definitely be good. Um, worth, uh, spending time on as well. Um, in a way, it's a little bit, um, you know, abstract, a bit high level, but yeah, that, that does feel needed, um, at least from my side.
What was the question again?
Um, how do we level up the ambassador program?
By doing the work we already have created, I guess. Or giving a reason why this work we have created is not as important that you are thinking we need to do.
I didn't really understand that.
And as, yeah, I guess it comes down to different perspectives. And from my side, I'm more like trying to figure out how to decentralize project management. And one of these, uh, like, answer to these questions was, okay, let's set up a process where we take all the programs in, all the questions in, and answer this, or prioritize them in a specific timeframe. Um, and which means that some of these agenda items may not be addressed for months, because there are just always something more important to do. But this doesn't mean that they are not important to answer. So then new, uh, meeting groups are grouping up and like separating into different teams of doing like breakout rooms or doing different, yeah, yeah, workgroups to tackle these different problems which are, we're not able to address to keep the ambassador basically going. So on all of these, as we skate and these working groups come up, there, we come up with things we want to do, or like the outcomes we want to have, and we somehow, somewhat way, we know what we need to do. We do have a big bottleneck, which was the same one we had in Swarm and in Catalyst, is that like a bounty manager who would then turn all of these ideas and requirements into actionable items and into models in a format that is easily accessible. The best experiment we had a few months ago, or now it's actually almost a year ago, and was the DWork. Because DWork, creating an action item in DWork, kind of give information to Discord, and it didn't break like this connection between people who are in Discord and tools who are, um, like onboarded through that, and then able to kind of still capture people who had no clue about the community, but still kind of introduce them into contributing, and through contribution, teach what is Singularity Net about or what could it be about. And so, right now, we have a bunch of tests. If so, if you are able to put our energy into assessing to these action items or coming up with even more important action items than this, that would be the next age of our, of our collaboration for now. And, yeah, so that's where, is my state is of how to level up an ambassador program is such simple doing. And unfortunately, it, we have many superheroes who have, who constantly like doing new tasks, making them up, also completing them, but still to consider that even if like three or four people are actively doing it every day, it, it would be much more effective if like a lot of people who watch and are in this group and spend a hour in entire week, and that would amass much more impact over longer periods of time than specific power people just churning activities. Because my issue is that, yes, I do a lot of stuff, but I get like, um, deep down in very detailed stuff, and, and, and I may sometimes lose the kind of the connection with all the new people, what they need, or, mm... So, yeah, the more we have people doing stuff, the better, because then it's basically opens up the ability for tools who are very actively involved to also explore new bridges between different members, communities.
Yeah, I think you make a good point, and like with, uh, with the Process Guild and the Treasury Guild, perhaps it's a reminder to the ambassadors here of like, there are these other meetings which we would love you guys to kind of engage with, and the questions, the questions that, uh, are coming from the community, uh, in these, in these town halls, are the questions we're trying to deal with in these other meetings, the Process Guild, the Treasury. And I definitely see how, um, those guilds could benefit, uh, uh, from all you great, all you great guys. Yeah. From all you great, all you great guys. Yeah.
Yeah, fully agree. Um, I, I, I also think what Tifa points out is, um. Is accurate for, for quite a lot of, uh, things. Processes are. In place, um, or at least discussed once and then out there somewhere. Um. Yeah, at the same time, I, I do feel pretty often that we're failing to capture, um. A lot of potential contributions. Um.
Agree.
Yeah, that, 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 I'm not sure if that's something, uh, which, which directly fits on the Process Guild meetings. In a way, it feels like there would almost be like some. More philosophical, um, approach kind of, uh, meetings.
It's a great idea. Yeah.
Well, I, I don't mean like hardcore philosophical. I, I mean just like, um, like the Process Guild is always. As the name suggests and as the meeting probably should be, very focused on, on processes. So trying to. If this happens, then what? And just trying to make it fit. Um. Which is not always the solution to a question, I guess. Like these kind of topics we're discussing right now, I've got no clue how to capture that into a process. Um.
Yeah.
But actually we did cover that in a process on start of this fourteenth February. And we, our main. Like a starting point was how to be funnel ambassadors basically and. We did come up with like a bigger framework and that, uh. And the action items of to deliver that kind of process was to. Was meant to be done by Marketing Guild. So that idea was that we have. One pagers for what is ambassador program and then how to join there and then. If you want to get the information of ambassador town hall, then you have the option to. Like talk about SingularityNet ecosystem and deep funding. And when you talk about ecosystem, you, you have like an ecosystem map for each of them. And many of these elements we already have, but what we don't have is like that. One landing page which connects all of that in, in, in a way that it's like simple to read. And if you want to, and then click if I deeper, if you want to want more information.
I, I do get the thing about like, uh, the connecting the information. So it's very intuitive, uh, on that level. And I think. Also, I think that can be done in like, in, in the soft skills, in the interpersonal relations, uh, which is. How I found I've got, uh, a lot of, a lot of relevant information, a lot of the information that. Is out there in the ecosystem that perhaps I haven't found for myself, that I've kind of needed someone to kind of. Help me a bit through that process personally.
Yeah, and I think it's also an iterative. So once we get an asset out which kind of encapsulates. These different possibilities in ambassador, but the next step after that is bring this into this ambassador town hall. And kind of have a discussion, like this is a framework. Where these, all, all these components are related to each other and how can you activate or how you can engage with that? And that will actually start the new discussions. Well, could you discuss this here or where does this thing fit? And like new questions will arise. So it's almost never ending question. How to become an ambassador and what is an ambassador because it's probably an involving role. Um, but yeah, the next step to me is to simply have some aggregation of inter-information. And speaking of Process Guild, I did open up the Zoom call.
Yeah, fair.
Yeah, we should kind of go there at some point.
That's true.
I just wanted to introduce myself and kind of jump in. Trying to talk about a couple of the things I think I had and I apologize that this call was cutting out on me. I was driving. So finally grabbed the potatoes and I missed some of the meat of the concerns here. I, I apologize. Um. But I recently got into SingularityNet, uh, Head Elf suggested I take a look at this. And I went into the D-work and I wasn't sure if, you know, you had to get signed up to be an ambassador before submitting anything. And I kind of looked at some of the marketing aspects and there's a. A, a solution I think maybe might help if engagement is the issue that seems to be a common thread here. Um, there's a tool called Farmbot, okay? And it allows for drips and tips directly on Discord. With a Discord-based wallet. Now, going back to what somebody was saying earlier about tweets. And there should have been something specifically on tweets. Well, if you're trying to get people, you know, to tweet about this and engage other people. You could do something with this Farmbot program where you can assign roles to people who. Tweet daily and post proof and assign a monetary value so that they can drip every day. And, you know, you assign a value, whether it's point oh three or whatever, to keep people engaged. If you want people in the videos and getting engaged from the Discord channel and coming into the various. Uh, rooms and breakout rooms, you can take a signup sheet and assign them a role. Okay, you were there, you have this role, you're eligible for the daily drip now. And I know we're all busy people and, and I hate to say it, but you know, money talks. And when people can assign a monetary value to something, even if it's just a little drip. And they can come in and get that, you're continuously engaging them and they're looking at, oh, what else can I do? To be eligible for these roles. And, and a source I think could possibly. Create a, a funnel into an ecosystem of Discord-based. And, you know, I, I hesitate to even say ambassadorship, but you get the average user. To take ownership of this because hey, there's something in it for me.
Nice, nice.
Yeah, definitely. Um, this does remind me, I don't think we did it for current town hall. They just take a screenshot of the attendance. Um, but usually we do have, um, a small, uh, reward for, uh, attending, uh, these type of meetings. Um, there's, there's also the Jimbal token, uh, not monetary, but, um. Contribution and attendance, um, focused. Um. Yeah, the Discord bot could, um, oh, there you go. In the event chat, um, Tifa just shared the task for. Joining the exact town hall we're in right now. Um, so. Uh, and you don't have to do anything, the people are assigned already. So there's a little bit of, uh.
Actually, if you are not assigned and you don't see your name, then simply submit your work and say hi. And then we can add you into the list. And if it's your first time, then share a Cardano wallet address to be eligible for the Jimbal and AJX rewards. And the main focus is to simply track the undangable contributions you're doing because. We are collecting a lot of energy into this one meeting and it will. With what value we see is that over time we will. See these people moving around these different working groups and providing feedback and we see how they're activating. And because we are this SingularityNet community, which is also thinks ahead and how could we use AI? So in years of time, when we collect these kinds of information, perhaps AI could start suggesting. The journeys of people and kind of guide us and see patterns which as humans we don't really notice as we are. On the doing work.
And, uh, just for clarity, I, I do not bring this up, um, to disregard anything about, uh, Farmbot. That, that, that could very well be a tool, um. Yeah, we might, we, we might be able to use that, um.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not a shill. I have no involvement in the project. Uh, it's just something that popped on my radar months ago and. You know, you're right, it's, you know, not all the tokens have monetary value, but I picked up, you know. Billions of tokens that have no value, but hey, if I'm not happy, I get them, I'm still smiling. But it was just a thought that popped in my head as I was listening.
Yeah, cool, cool. Yeah, and, and thanks for sharing, absolutely. I just wanted to point out that, yeah, we, we, we do recognize, um, meeting attendance. That, that was, um. Cause I, I do feel that's, that's quite important and, yeah.
Yeah, and my thought was it just seemed like, uh, engagement beyond the people in the meeting was something. People were looking towards. Thanks for, uh, explaining some things to me though. I appreciate it.
Nice contribution, dude.
Um, yes, Libra, to confirm, that's, uh, that's correct. And so that also goes for, for others who may not have, um, shared their, um, Cardano receive, uh, address yet. Within this, uh, this server, I guess, within the, this context. Um, if you go to that task and comment on it with your wallet, um, everything will work out. Um, I'm gonna stop looking at the clock, I guess, uh, but it does feel like at some point we should, um. Come to a conclusion of this session. Um, just, let's do another check. Anybody has something to add to this for now? Alright, um, yeah, and that is, oh, go ahead. Maybe I heard somebody unmute, I think.
Thank you. Thank you. It was fun.
And thank you. It's, uh, it's always good to see, uh, new faces. That's great stuff.
It's my first time. It was really easy. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I hope to see you another time. So, um, let's see this, uh, two things. First of all, thank you all for attending. Awesome. And second, uh, for those interested, um, the Process Guild, uh, Zoom link is. Event chat here. And yeah, that's the next one on the, on the list for now. So. Um, yeah, hope to see you either in one of the upcoming meetings or, or on Discord. Thanks a lot, everyone.